All right, I'm calling this meeting back to order. Item 4.1, Pledge of Allegiance, Superintendent, can you please lead us?
Thank you, please stand.
Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 4.2, Student Preferential, would you like to do the broadcast statement?
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety. It will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel Comcast, Consolidated Communication, and AT&amp;T and U-verse today. Today, meetings will be aired October 8 at 7:00 and Monday, October 10 at noon. It will also webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net and can be reviewed on Metro Cable 14 YouTube channel. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form located in the back of the community room and give them to our communications representative, along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comments to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until an item comes up on the agenda. Please turn off your cell phones or place them on silent or vibrate.
Perfect, thank you. Item 4.3, Stellar Students, Member Villa?
Okay, so the two students that were selected for Stellar Student are Emily Lee and Soren Bembry. Both students started in the Expanding Learning Program at Willsey Wood Middle School and are now seniors at West Campus High School where they were, they serve as student athletes on the girls volleyball team. When they are not collaborating with each other on the court, Emily, Mark Twain, and Soren from Peter Burnett impact their communities through their YDSS High School Ambassador under the roles of cross-age mentors, site supporters, and community advocates. So unfortunately, they are not here today, but fortunately, they are actually at Folsom, Cordova. They did not want to skip their game today as they said their team really needs them to be present. So we honor them at their game and are very thankful for their continued service here in Sac City.
Perfect, thank you. Item 5.0, Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Session?
Good evening, President Pritchett. There's one announcement this evening coming out of closed session. The board approved a settlement agreement related to special education services by a vote of seven to zero. Also, President Pritchett, there is a public comment on this announcement.
Perfect, thank you. Mr. Gladney?
Welcome, good evening. Turn it on, there you go.
Initially, I wanted to, sorry, I want to comment because I saw a couple of principal positions. Well, I'm glad that they did not get announced because there was some rescheduling of community meetings, so I hope that we continue authentic community engagement around the replacement of very important positions, especially at neighborhood schools, which are sort of under the onslaught of the district by negligence and failure to uplift them and support them. But that being said, again, to a point I continue to make, specifically at these two, well, three schools, I hope that we can find out why we're losing good leaders at school sites, whether it's positive or negative, that's only what we can really learn. So if we're really truly going to serve our students and our school sites, then we have to have that information if we're going to be a data-driven district. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. All right, item 6.0, Agenda Adoption, get a motion? Second? Thank you, all in favor say aye. All right. Item 7.0, Public Comment?
President Pritchett, we had a public comment on agenda adoption, Terrence Gladney.
6.0, okay, go ahead. Welcome back.
Trying to get my steps up. Once upon a time, if I came to a board meeting, I could pose an actual question and it would, the answer would be posted on the district website. Over the past however many months, I've asked plenty of questions, whether in a specific capacity as a member of a district-level committee, or as a member of the public, as a parent, as a servant leader and advocate in our district, and there's been so many unfulfilled promises that questions will be answered, solutions will be provided. There is no space on this agenda. If this is improper to put it on the agenda, I ask that there is some space where parents really, and community members really can come and feel that they will wholeheartedly receive answers to the questions that are posed. We're told to contact board members directly. We're told to email, call, keep coming to board meetings, but where is the reciprocation that is supposed to be coming from our Board of Education? Thank you.
Thank you, we'll look into that. All right, item 7.0, Public Comment?
We have a total of six speakers. First is Jim Schibell, and then we also have Jean Shanley, who will be recognized for 10 minutes. Four other speakers have given her their time.
Okay.
Hey, good evening. My name is Jim Schibell. Ms. Pritchett, good to see you again, and Board Member Wu, good to see you again, and Superintendent Aguilera, good to see you again as well. I just, I did come with a request tonight, a very humble request, because I know you don't have the power to grant them from the days, but I want to commend the superintendent and his staff for posting next week's board agenda and next week's board packet already on the website, and I see you have a policy coming before you on updating your charter school policies. As you may know, AB 1505 passed in 2019. It went into effect in the middle of COVID, and so obviously, people had their heads focused and their eyes focused on the students, which is great. That includes the charter schools, that includes the authorizers. But my hope would be that between now and maybe next week, we could have some collaboration between the charter school leaders in the district and the district staff to make sure that that policy is reflective. Just one quick note, you're updating 420.4, but there's actually four sub-policies in the CSBA manual that they came out with that would also be included, that include things like renewal, revocation, oversight, and there's one or the one I can't remember right now. I think that that collaboration is where the district's at its strongest. Just a quick recap, if I may, since I have 57 seconds left. I'm a student of Sac City Unified. I went to Phoebe Hurst, I went to Southern Middle School in the mid-'90s under the leadership of Greg Purcell at Southern Middle School. He was amazing, but he couldn't plug all of the holes in the ceiling, and so there were two days in the mid-'90s when the kids had to go home from school because it rained so much that many of the buildings actually flooded. And that was before the threshold for school bonds had been reduced by Prop 39 in the early 2000s, and the Sac City School District really struggled to get bonds passed. So that threshold came down, and in 2012, you may remember Measure Q and Measure R passed, you have an update on them tonight. Member Phillips, I was actually the only person to show up from your district back in 2012, it was Patrick Kennedy's then, for that bond campaign with Jim Keddie. And we actually set up a call center with our students during a fall break, and they called for that bond, and that's where, you know, the district staff, the community, the parents, the students all came together and that bond passed, resulted in millions of dollars for projects at great schools. I think this is another example of collaboration with those policies where we can just make sure that we're on the same page and working together to make sure we're doing what's best for kids. Thank you for allowing me to go a little bit over, President Pritchett.
Of course, thank you. Next speaker?
Jean Shanley, for 10 minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me my full 10 minutes this time, I appreciate it. So tonight, I wanted to talk to you mainly about the website. The website right now, if people go on the website, they can't understand what the current policies are in the district for COVID. So when I go on the website, it still says that children need to be vaccinated, and this is not true. It said that if they do not get vaccinated, they still have to get tested. This is not true. Just all of the, all the material there is like a year old, it's all outdated. So I understand there's been a lot of changes, but some of these changes are more than a month ago, and, you know, this is what has to happen with COVID, things change rapidly and people need to be notified. And on the CDPH website, if they have changes, they might just post a notice on the top that this is outdated, this is superseded by some subsequent guidance, like here's one from CDPH, and they have a notice on the top, this guidance is no longer in effect, it's for historical purposes, and lets the community, something to let the community know it's out of date and you're working on updating it if there's a timeliness issue. But right now, there's no indication, when people go on the website, that it's bad information. I'm not sure why that is, if it's maybe, just as I said, that there's just, you know, understaffing and difficulty getting to it on the schedule of things to do, or if there's an intention that we kind of keep a real low profile about what we notify the community about if we don't really want them to know, and so we don't highlight it very much. For example, this change in the, in the vaccine requirements, the only thing I saw about it was a video that was done with Victoria Flores, and Mr. Heap over here interviewed her. It was a YouTube video. I can't find any citation to it on the website, if it's there, it's just kind of buried and, you know, mixed in with a lot of other materials, and I couldn't see it. We got it in an email to parents, and the video's titled very blandly, you know, COVID update, nothing to highlight it. When you impose a vaccine requirement, there are press releases, there are postings on social media, it's quite a bit of announcements to make sure everybody knew what the rule was. But when it's reversed, there isn't announcements, and in fact, it looks like you're kind of shoveling it under the rug. So I think that people deserve to be notified, same thing with testing, masking, and the issues are the same with the employees. The employees also, under state guidance, do not have to get vaccinated right now. There might be some confusion where it says, oh, an employer can require it as long as it's an FDA-approved vaccine, but you've been indicating that what's available to people is the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccines, and those are not FDA-approved. The vaccines that are approved by the FDA are ones that are not, at least ComorNadi is not available for sale, I haven't heard of SpikeVax being available anywhere, but they're very specifically named and trademarked vaccine names and product. And to my knowledge, ComorNadi and SpikeVax are not available. And so if they're not FDA-approved vaccines, nobody's required to get them, and it says that right on the state guidance. So it's, it's kind of just a general communications issue in my mind. Like I said, maybe it's just an accident, but, you know, I'm seeing kind of a theme with communications, you know, one of the issues was last meeting, when I got up to have my time and to speak, I was shut down. And again, this was a communications issue, it was, I was not given my time. I was given two minutes on the timer, so that when that two minutes ran out, then another two minutes was put up in order to try and maybe confuse me about how much time I had. This mistreatment was not delivered to anybody else other than me. So to me, it looks like it's an intention to shut down the content of what I was saying. So I'm concerned about communications generally. I know that Mr. Heap is a new employee with the district, and he's just come on board in March, and I also know that his background is in private corporate media like KCRA, and maybe, I think there was another few radio or TV stations before that, Wichita. I've worked in public environments and private, I've worked in private corporations, and then I worked in a public institution. They're very, very different. It's like, you know, entering the atmosphere, like going from one to the other. And so when you work in a private environment, you are beholden to the shareholders, you're not beholden to the public. When you work in a public environment, you are beholden to the public. You know, you're all public servants, that's why we have the Bagley-Kean Act, the Brown Act, that allow public meetings, there's requests for information, you know, public information that we can get disclosure. And it could be that people are not aware of these when they go from a private environment to a public environment, and maybe there are things that they were accustomed to in their prior employment that were okay there that are not okay in a public environment. What we should be advocating and supporting here is transparency and disclosure, maximum understanding of the public, not little disclosures snuck into an email that maybe we hope people don't see, should be very plain. If someone moves to this district and they're looking around in shopping districts, they, it shouldn't be that they needed to get that email that got sent to parents like a month ago. They should be able to go right on that website and know what the rules are in this district, and that's not the case right now. It feels like it's being covered up and shrouded. Maybe I'm not getting it, maybe there's something I'm missing, but that's how it appears to the public. So I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the lack of legal counsel. Like, there's no legal counsel here, and I know you've been lacking in your chief legal counsel since last December. This could be part of it, you know, when you have a legal counsel present, they can help notice things like that, help bring people on board and educate them about what the rules are, and make sure there's compliance. And so I'm kind of concerned about that as well. Your legal counsel, just, you know, to touch on that issue, you had legal counsel last year in October when you were rolling out these, the mandate resolution, which was illegal. And shortly after that, your legal counsel left. I don't know why, I have no communications with this person, but I do know that when a lawyer's representing, representing a client and the client engages in any illegal conduct that they're not comfortable with, there really isn't anything the lawyer can do other than leave. I don't know why your lawyer left, I just think the timing is interesting, that you started to engage in this illegal mandating, and then your lawyer left. And then there were several months before you reposted the position, and then that position has just gone unfilled until now. And so it's kind of a gaping hole, and I'm hoping that you're able to somehow supply this legal counsel for your employees, existing employees, longtime employees, and new employees, so that you can maintain compliant communications. Because right now, I think your website needs a lot of overhauling. There could be a desire, I can understand, of people having put a lot of time and energy into building out what's there. It's a lot, it's a lot of stuff. And so I recognize that that could be an aspect of it as well, letting go of stuff that is not required anymore. Maybe there's a hope that it's going to come back, it just went away for a few months, but, but wait till January, we'll reinstitute it, it'll all come back then. I don't think that's a reason to keep things confusing and miscommunicated in the short term. Maybe you can find, work with a technology person to offload it into a side area, and then you can shuffle it back out again if you think you're going to be able to apply it in the future. But I would like the website to be clear, truthful, honest, and transparent, not confusing, not misleading, not deceitful, and so that the community is fully informed about what their rights are and what the situation is in the district. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you to the parents who donated their time to me tonight, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment?
That's all.
All right, item 8.0, Special Presentations. 8.1, Approved Resolution Number 3287, Recognition of Filipino-American History Month. Member Wu?
Thank you. Filipino presence in, in the continental United States was October 18, 1587, when the first Luzanas Indios arrived in Morro Bay, California onboard the Nuestra Señora de Esperanza Manila-built galleon ship. First, Filipino-American and National Historical Society recognizes 1763 as the year in which the first permanent Filipino settlement in the United States was established in St. Malo, Louisiana. Filipino-American community is the third-largest Asian-American and Pacific Islander group in the United States, with a population of approximately 4 million. Filipino-American students represent 1.3% of the students of the population of SCUSD, 2.7% in Sacramento County, and 2.4% in the state of California. Filipino-Americans were central to the formation of the Third World Liberation Front, who were critical to the organizing, mobilization, and success of the 1968 San Francisco State Student Strike. Filipino-American farmworkers and labor leaders such as Philip, Philippe Baracruz, and Larry Itlong played an integral part, a role in the multi-ethnic United Farm Workers Movement alongside Caesar Chavez, Dolores Huerta, and other Latino workers. Filipino-Americans played an integral role in the healthcare system of the United States as nurses, doctors, and other medical professionals. Filipino-Americans have contributed greatly to music, dance, literature, education, business, journalism, sports, fashion, politics, government, science, technology, the fine arts, and other fields that enrich the United States. It is essential to promote the understanding, education, and appreciation of the history and culture of the Filipino-Americans in the United States. Now, therefore, be it resolved that SCUSD recognizes the Celebration of Filipino-American History Month in October 2022, a testament to the advancement of Filipino-Americans, a time to reflect and remember the many notable contributions that Filipino-Americans have made to the United States, and a time to renew efforts towards research and examination of history and culture so as to provide an opportunity for all people of the United States to learn more about Filipino-Americans and to appreciate the historic contributions of Filipino-Americans to the United States.
Thank you, Member Wu. Do we have any public comment? All right, with that, can I get a motion to approve Resolution Number 32? Thank you, can I get a second? Student preferential vote? And Superintendent, roll call.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you so much, thank you for bringing that to us, Member Wu?
Yes.
Item 8.2, Approved Resolution Number 3288, Recognition of the School Administrator, October 9th through the 15th, 2022. Dr. McConnell, Tiffany Smith-Simmons, hello?
Hello, good evening. Good evening, board members, I am Tiffany Smith-Simmons, and I am here with a recognition of the Week of the School Administrators, October 9th through the 15th. I wanted to just say, Happy Principal Appreciation Month. October is one of my favorite times of the year because it's a chance to acknowledge our school leaders for the incredible work that they do. We would like to say that this year, we have a theme in support of, and it is focusing on all of our champions of the district. Our site leaders are champions, champions to our students and our school communities. We would like to say hi and welcome to all of our new principals, congratulations on your new positions, and thank you. Our students have been through a lot these past few years, and we know that your energy and your fresh ideas will go a long way towards helping them heal and get excited about learning. And to our veteran principals, thank you for being the voice of experience, for lending calmness and stability to our district during a challenging time, and for providing non-stop mentorship to our newest principals. The principalship comes with daily highs and lows, and we want you to feel supported and empowered each and every day because only then can you go about championing our district goals like strengthening the instructional core and improving engagement with our families and school communities. When our students and families think about Sac City leaders, they're thinking about you, the leaders of our children's schools, you are the people they know and trust. Because of that, you represent a critical bridge between the district and the students and families, and we serve, and we are here to support you in building that bridge, and we are profoundly grateful for your leadership, and we'll do everything we can to make sure that you're celebrated and supported not only during October, but throughout the entire school year. So Happy Principal and Site Leader Appreciation Month, you are truly our district champions. And for the resolution, whereas the state of California has declared the second full week of October as Week of the School Administrator, and whereas an educated public serves as the foundation of our democracy, and whereas our school administrators are passionate, lifelong learners who believe in the value of a quality public education, and whereas our administrators touch, mold, and mentor so many lives with everlasting effect, and whereas excellence in our state and district begins with our administrators, and whereas the administrators overcome obstacles and challenges daily to make a difference in the lives of students and families and staff. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education commands our administrators and encourages parents and the community to recognize the efforts of principals as we celebrate the Week of October 9th through 15th as the Week of School Administrators.
Perfect, thank you. With that, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
All right. Well, do we have any board comment? No? Okay, I just want to say thank you to all of our administrators. I have to say that I attended Dr. Irene Easter's Celebration of Life of a Dear Principal in our area, and I was surrounded by other principals and staff in our, in the area, and hearing a student come up and talk about her, it really hit me hard of like, wow, like, I want to be like that. I want to be the person that our students remember years down the road, right? And it's inspiring the work that they do, so thank you so much. With that, I will take a motion?
I'll show move.
All right, I got a motion and a second, student preferential vote? All right, and Superintendent, roll call.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. All right, item 8.3, Approved Resolution Number 3289, Recognition of National School Lunch Week, October 10th through the 14th.
Good evening, my name is Diana Flores, I'm the Director of Nutrition Services, Central Kitchen, and Distribution Services. I'm here to recognize National School Lunch Week, and in doing that, I wanted to give you a little brief history about how the National School Lunch Program came to be today, sorry. In 1853, the Children's Aid Society of New York was the earliest known entity to provide meals for students while at school. Then in 1904, a book named Poverty, written by Robert Hunter, influenced a national movement to provide meals while at school due to widespread poverty of children in New York public schools. By 1946, access to purchase meals at school grew across the nation, but many students were unable to pay for meals and would go hungry back to class, or be given work duties at the school in order to receive a meal at no cost. The National School Lunch Act was passed in 1946, providing much-needed funding and support for free and reduced-priced meals for low-income families. In 1962, President John F. Kennedy created the National School Lunch Week to promote the importance of a healthy school lunch for a child's life and the impact it has both inside and outside of the classroom. By 1969, President Richard M. Nixon convened the first-ever White House Conference on Hunger, Nutrition, and Health, establishing the National School Lunch and School Breakfast Program, along with the Special Supplemental Nutrition Programs for Women, Infants, and Children, better known as WIC today. It's been 50 years since the last White House Conference on Hunger, Nutrition, and Health. Last week, the Biden-Harris Administration White House Conference on Hunger, Nutrition, and Health was reconvened with the National Strategy to Combat Hunger and Address Health and Wellness in Our Nation's Citizens, including schoolchildren. Key takeaways from the conference includes advancing a pathway to free, healthy school meals for all nationally, while we get that in California now, that is not the case across the nation, with a strategy to expand access to free meals for 9 million more schoolchildren by 2032. Also, takeaways, expansion of efforts to fund food service training and equipment to enable higher-quality meals, investment in school nutrition workforce, and expanding nutrition education for children. Here at Sac City Unified Nutrition Services, we honor the past as well as look to the future, and celebrate National School Lunch Week, October 10th through 14th. We are grateful for the immense contributions and efforts of our entire team, from our warehouse, our central kitchen team, our admin team, and especially our school food service teams, ensuring access year-round for all our students. That concludes my resolution.
Perfect, thank you. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
All right, do we have any board comment? Member Phillips? Member Phillips.
Just making a statement, thank you for the resolution. I do hope in, I guess, in all efforts to maintain a certain level of recognition of racism in the districts, that I would love to see in some kind of way, a more developed history of how students have been affected by the school lunch program. I just want to put that out there because I think frequently we choose not to talk about racism in the school districts. So it's not specifically, you know, that children are not being fed, it's that we are, might be feeding certain children and not other children, or you might be trying to Americanize, you know, the immigrant palette. I don't know. But it's really important that we talk about this. This is how we're going to change things. If we start talking about, everything is affected by racism, every single last thing. The car you drive, the, you know, the breakfast you had this morning, it's really important. And our children need to see how they have been affected by policies that have been put into place to make sure that perhaps they're not going to eat what other kids eat, or maybe there's, you know, an agenda behind that. I just, I want to put that out there. I like the resolution. I think it makes absolute sense, with the exception of the fact that we're not paying attention to the past and the history of how things started and who they started for and who they're here for now, which I appreciate. But I think we have to take a more historical bend on our resolutions.
Thank you, Member Phillips.
No cap, though, Ms. Flores.
Thank you, Member Phillips. Member Villa?
I just wanted to say I've been visiting schools right now in District 4 to see how everybody's doing, coming back to school, and I can speak for many of the kids. I was with the superintendent at a school. They're so happy to have the salad bars back and the fruit access. My own daughter is so excited. She's like, Mom, did you know that we actually have a salad bar again, and the fruit, and there's apples? So I'm very thankful for that, access to a salad bar for children, especially in elementary school. I've witnessed so many kids being very excited to put that on their plate. So on a side note, just thank you for your continued service.
Thank you.
Perfect. All right. Do we have any other additional board comments? All right. Well, thank you for that. I can attest just the smell of the food going by school sites is just, smells delicious. Doesn't smell like when I was in school, for sure. With that, I will take a motion for approval of Resolution Number 3289.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Student preferential vote.
Aye.
All right. Superintendent, roll call.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Murawski.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Member Wu.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Definitely, we should get a hand for that one. All right. Item 9.0, Workshop Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives, 9.1, Bond Oversight Committee, Measures Q and R, Annual Report, 2122. Chief Ramos?
Thank you, President Pritchett. I'd like to introduce Mr. Brian Hill, our Chair of the CBOC for both Measure R and Measure Q.
I'm here representing the, sorry, the Q and R Bond Oversight Committee, Measures Q and R. And I'm going to hit the button here. Right? No? There we go. SCUSD core values here, and you guys know them better than I do, but my point is, this is for the kids. The bond money that we all spend that is here for the district is for the kids, and that's why I'm on the committee, and I know other people are there for that reason as well. As was mentioned earlier, fascinating that the Prop 39 showed up earlier in the conversation here tonight. In November 2000, Prop 39 was approved at the state level that allowed bonds to pass with a 55% threshold rather than a supermajority. They also created a CBOC for each school district that passed a bond. And the specific intent, although there may be others, of the committee is to perform a performance audit and to review that, and as well as a financial audit, and then come to you, the board, on an annual basis and say how that went, and also to advertise and communicate with public about what's going on with bond spending. The membership is myself, Terrence is, there he is, he's back here, and I haven't seen Marsha or Carolyn. Are they here today? No, they're not. And we've rolled off three members, so there are now only four of us. The bylaws of the committee say seven should be on the committee, and I'll talk about that a little bit later in the presentation. Support staff, and we get lots of help from the support staff. This is an oversight committee, so at some point in time, we're asking tough questions. We are probing, we are trying to find out were bond expenditures made appropriately, and I would say that Rosen or staff have routinely and always are ready to answer those questions. And I want to make a special call out to Crystal Hoff and Elena, Ellen, I'm sorry, Hankard, who always are responsive to questions, setting up meetings, and making sure that I understand Crystal's accounting for bond spend. We, and we've got to go to the next page. I'm sorry, I'm forgetting to click here. There's a support staff. Annual activities, there are bond sales, there is construction ongoing, as you guys know, all the time within the district. We held this year four Zoom meetings, which was painful, as you guys are well aware of, and we had our first in-person meeting in two years, I guess, on August 3rd at the Central Kitchen, which is a really impressive facility. So again, an example of spend there that I think benefits the kids. I mentioned as well, we review reports at each meeting set up by the Accounting Department, and on an annual basis, we review audit reports performed by, or prepared by CRO, and that's later in the brief, I'll tell you what's going on there. I'm now going to step through projects. I'm sorry, I'm not going to. Chris Ralston is. So Chris, stand up here because I know very little about the Luther Burbank roof.
Thank you, Chair Hill. He has asked that I, oh, thank you. Just go over some of the projects done in the 2122 fiscal year. You guys are obviously updated routinely on all the projects we have in the district, but this is for the fiscal year, starting with, these were our first projects also out of COVID, after the COVID break, so there's only a few that we'll be discussing. Martin Luther King Roof Replacement, old roof replaced with a 25-year shingle roof. We had very little outside of the typical scope that comes with a roofing project on this one, showing some before and afters. This, again, is a 25-year warranty roof. Door security is an ongoing project. We have 22 sites left out of 85, I believe. We're currently in the high school phases right now. I believe we're at Iram Johnson, finishing up that project. This is so that it will be the Columbine-style locks, locked from the inside of the classroom. Our district has chosen to use a lock key method, style lock, where you lock from the inside with a key instead of a push button. The push button has mechanism side that can easily be, with the right know-how, popped open in an emergency, and we don't want that. The key tumbler allows for a more secure lock, and that's what we're doing in our project. This is set to wrap up in spring of 2023. We do have to worry about ADA compliance with door handles as we're touching them, so there has to be single action from both sides with no twisting motion, and you can see that in this picture. Herbert Bancroft was our, I would say, typical hardcore replacement project that we do several during each summer, and it is replacing the asphalt with just new asphalt, some improvements to the playground, bark box, and then some seat walls were added. Because of COVID and the ongoing facilities, industry, shipping delays, we are only now getting ready to receive the park benches that are supposed to be installed as part of this project from 14 months ago. So we are wrapping up Bancroft technically just right now. Couple of befores and afters similar to each of ours. One of the adjustments we have learned, lessons learned, and we do those in facilities and work with our CBOC is underground utilities being replaced while we have opened up the asphalt and concrete here at Bancroft. We did have a gas leak in a pipe after we finished this project, we had to cut open some concrete. So in all of our projects within the last 14 months, and the ones you are updated on routinely in the summer, we are doing underground utilities. Remember, some of these utilities are 60, 70 years old, so we're taking advantage of those things as part of our lessons learned.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Real quick recap here, I'm sure you get other reporting on this, but about $10 million of spend this year. What I think is interesting is looking at, these are bond funds, obviously you have other state and federal funds that have been spent through the COVID period that increased that volume, and Chris and his team have worked those activities as well. So let's get to the audit report. This is the meat of the presentation today, and I'll tell you, you don't need to hold your breath that the audit report is positive, you may know that already. And for Measure Q, established as, again, earlier mentioned in November 2012, $346 million were passed over time on that bond. And if I, I think I have the numbers right, for this year, there's about $29 million left. But the audit conclusion is the monies were spent in accordance with the legislation. That's the important thing you need to know today, and that's what the Bond Oversight Committee, its primary responsibility is. Measure R, considerably smaller, November 12, $68 million over time there, and if I'm, again, I've got my numbers right, there's like, just like $1.3 million left. So there's a spend down there. And the audit report for Measure R, as well, is the monies were spent in accordance with the legislation. So you can be confident that that looks pretty good. Let's flip two pages here, and it's questions and statements, and two comments I want to make. I am new to the chair position, it's been about three months, and I've spent some time with your staff, working through a variety of issues that I have in understanding and communicating, and again, they're always there to help. Training, our committee needs, and we'll get to the next point, we need more committee members, but we also need training. And I noted that when I started, I haven't seen a lot of training. There is old training, if you will, available. There is an Association of California Bond Oversight Committees that is providing training. Little Hoover Commission is working these kinds of things. This is a, this is not a SAC City issue, it's a statewide issue. So Ms. Ramos and I have talked about a variety of things. There is a associate CalBOC meeting in a week or so, and all the members have, or will, hopefully will attend via Zoom on that, and we need to be in contact with other districts about getting their training as well, because this committee rolls on and off, people roll on and off. You see, four members have left in the last year and a half. So to get to my second point, Measure H, you guys are well aware of the fact that it passed in 2020. It was accepted into the, as a past element in April of this year, I believe, and you also need to get a committee started so when funds are spent there, that there is a Bond Oversight Committee to meet the Prop 39 legislation. So two things, I'm asking, but I'm working with Rose, so don't worry about, you need to jump on this, the training, and I'm sorry, that's on the training. On the second one, you guys are responsible for creating the Measure H Committee, and I know that there, I have applied as an example to continue my membership there. Other members of the community have done that as well, so I implore you to get that going so you can spend money for the kids. Okay?
Perfect. Thank you so much. Do we have public comment?
We do not.
All right. Well, thank you all for your work on this. It's great work. It's been a long time since we got the money and a lot of work that you've all put into it, so thank you.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Oh, do we have, sorry, I should have asked, do we have any board comment? There I am off. Member Murawski.
Thank you. I just want to express my gratitude for you, Terrence, and all of the members who have served on the Bond Oversight Committee. I know it's technical, it's a lot of work to understand and dig in, and I appreciate your service and also, you know, the fact that you want to make improvements and do the training, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Member Garcia.
I just want to also thank you for your service on the, you know, Bond Oversight Committee. It's a really important committee. It's how we make sure that the dollars are being spent in accordance to what we promised the voters when we went before them. So I just want to make sure that, to thank you, and I really appreciate that you're asking for training. I think that's really important in order for you to be able to do the job better, or so just very thankful.
We get people from varied backgrounds, and so, which is great, but to throw them in and, you know, what's an audit report? You know, some people know, some people don't. I was unfortunate in my, at the end of my career, I did audits at a major corporation. So I, that was my final two years, so I have a pretty good understanding of what's going on there. It isn't necessary for everybody to know that, but they have to understand the basics of it so that when Rosen or team asserts something, we can ask questions and work through that.
Yeah, well, thank you. And I do have some questions for staff, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so thank you again.
Sure.
Yeah, so one of the questions is the door security improvement. I think you said you have 87 sites. I had a question recently at a community meeting about the desire of parents to have, you know, I guess, the locks that lock from the inside at the main entrance of the door to, you know, enter the school. So I'm just wondering, is, are these just for classrooms, are these for the main entrance into the school? And just wondering what sort of conversations or opportunities there are for, you know, I mean, parents who want to learn more about how they might be able to engage in advocating for this? How do we do that, like, as a district? How do we engage in that conversation?
Sure. So the lock project is all locks and doors, so, including the front. Every site has a different challenge. McClatchy, the front doors that, right on the street, those are very old, specific doors, and drilling into them could damage a historical aspect of that building. Those locks are special locks. We haven't even received them yet, and they were ordered eight months ago. Another example is Theodore Judah can lock, but it's by an extreme way of locking it. They have to push a little harder, and it's, they're old doors, and we have to work on some of those items that are special ordered. The goal would be that they all can lock from the inside, and that is the goal of this project. This project is several years in the making. It's from a past series cell, so some of those is, the intent was even before some of the technology really kicked in, like the Ring Doorbell is a very popular request of our department right now, and we're going to try to come up with some ideas, and Ms. Ramos has asked me to do a little research and then be able to share out some ideas that we can continue to improve the safety of our sites, and how do we engage in that safety with any of the projects we do moving forward? So if it's a Ring-style bell or some type of electronic lock, a lot of our projects moving forward, if we're dealing with a major infrastructure change, we would move to the card swipe process. Those are the more secure types of locking mechanisms. It also allows us as a system to lock down faster and with some type of accountability to us as either a department or a district, and how are we locking down, and timestamps, and how they interact with cameras and stuff. So just using technology as it's coming out, but doing it thoughtfully so that we can do it uniformly across all of our systems in an efficient timeline and not try to have to change six times as technology changes because our process is a little slow.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. That's very helpful. So, and then my other questions about the, you know, membership for Measure H, for the BOC. BOC. Just wondering, I thought we had already reached out, asking, you know, members of our communities to please apply. I know this was during the shutdown, so it was kind of hard to, you know, recruit, but I'm just wondering, is there sort of like a status of applicants and we just need to go through the process of selection and then board adoption, so?
Yeah, so we went through a very rigorous community outreach effort from May through the better part of the summer, and we received a number of applicants. We've vetted those applicants now and are working with, scheduling a committee to review those applicants and so we can bring appointments forward to the board. We're looking at dates for that committee review process for the end of October, hoping that we can bring those to the board here in the very near future.
Okay, so we do have applicants in the queue. Okay, thank you, we're not starting from scratch, thank you.
All right, thank you, Member Garcia, and thank you again for your work. This is an informational item. All right, moving on to item 9.2, Facilities Master Plan Update. Nathaniel?
All right. Good evening, President Pritchett, Superintendent Aguilar, members of the board. I'm Nathaniel Browning and I'm here to give you an update on the Facilities Master Plan this evening. Here's the agenda tonight. I plan to ground us in the background of what a Facilities Master Plan looks like, illustrate how we've been implementing it, and outline ongoing stakeholder engagement efforts around initial projects, and finally, provide next steps. Here are the six acronyms that you'll see throughout the presentation this evening. So, a Facilities Master Plan is a collection of data that serves as a basis for planning future facilities improvements within the district. It provides a rationale and prioritization to the school community and public for the use of capital funding. The data most readily utilized in traditional master plans only relies on current facility conditions and enrollment or capacity trends in district facilities. Unfortunately, this can lead to the prioritization of capital projects in affluent neighborhoods that have enrollment growth, while historically marginalized neighborhoods witness continued disinvestment and enrollment declines due to the draw of those other schools. The district decided to take a different approach to our current Facilities Master Plan. Under the leadership of the superintendent and board, staff were tasked with addressing previous funding inequities through the development of an internal district equity indices to help identify funding priorities based on the level of need, as outlined in Resolution 3113 that was passed in 2019. The board, superintendent and staff acknowledged the longstanding practices in how capital projects were identified and how those practices further marginalized less affluent communities. The district realized that that process and engagement would be needed to establish trust and credibility within the community. The district acknowledged that such historical patterns could only be overcome by centering the voices of those who were impacted most. Therefore, relying on the input of a 30-person steering committee consisting of community members, parents, academics, and administrators, and with the help of a consulting team well versed in equity issues, four principles were developed to guide this process. Those four principles include, one, ensuring that voices of students, parents, and community members inform district planning; two, utilizing student, neighborhood, and school site demographic data as opposed to enrollment numbers; three, closely aligning the goals of the LCAP with facilities priorities; and four, being visionary as well as practical, for example, account for long-term maintenance and operations of those buildings as well. The result of this unique approach was a Facilities Master Plan that was a board-approved last October that prioritized funding for major renovation projects and school replacements as sites identified through neighborhood equity indicators, as identified by the Berkeley Opportunity Map. And LCAP identified student populations as primary indicators over enrollment growth or the condition of the facilities. It definitely was the first of its kind. In fact, SAC City Unified was awarded the 2022 Leroy Green Award for Excellence at the Coalition for Adequate School Housing Conference last year for our groundbreaking work on this Facilities Master Plan. Since then, we began implementing the Facilities Master Plan as a tool to identify and prioritize large renovations and school rebuilds through an equity lens. As such, the Facilities Master Plan has led staff to identify three initial projects that positively impact four programs, school programs. And those programs are Edward Kimball, Cesar Chavez, Nicholas, and Oak Ridge Elementary Schools. Edward Kimball and Cesar Chavez are located on the same property and collectively serve grades transitional kindergarten through six. These three projects are located in neighborhoods identified as needing the greatest capital investment and categorized by the Berkeley Opportunity Map as being neighborhoods with high segregation and poverty. There are 14 schools within the district located in such neighborhoods, and neighborhoods with high segregation and poverty are defined as neighborhoods in California that consistently meet standards for both poverty, which is defined as 30% of the population below the federal poverty line, and racial segregation, which is defined as an overrepresentation of people of color relative to the county. Cesar Chavez, Nicholas, and Oak Ridge Elementaries are three of the 13 schools within the district that are categorized as having the highest percent of LCAP target students. Edward Kimball is categorized as having a high percent of LCAP target students, but has been included in this set of projects due to it being co-located on an undersized property with Cesar Chavez Elementary, which is an all-portable site. They also serve the same families as Cesar Chavez. In addition to the equity indicators, these sites were identified based on further needs that are not represented in the data here. As I just stated, Kimball and Chavez are two single-story campuses co-located on a single site that is undersized. Additionally, Chavez is an aging, all-portable site that does not have adequate playground space, nor an adequately sized multipurpose room. Nicholas Elementary is also one of the worst facilities conditions out of all of our sites within the district. And lastly, Oak Ridge has a very small parking lot directly off of MLK Junior Boulevard that creates a very unsafe environment for our students, families, and staff. These issues and concerns elevate these projects to the top of the list for completing school, complete school rebuilds. Stakeholder engagement for these projects has been approached with the four key principles in mind that was shared in the previous slide. We began our stakeholder engagement efforts in three parts. First, we took the design team to the central office for a full day of meetings with all department leaders to hear about their programming and how we should design a new school around best practices, the LCAP goals for each of their areas of oversight. This was well-received by department leaders that had never been previously engaged in this manner, and it created an ideal platform for the design teams to identify priorities for each specific department as they strive to provide excellent service to our community. Second, we began the site-level engagement process by organizing tours to nearby new schools for groups of staff to come witness and to begin collecting data from staff on what they preferred in those new designs. This was just the initial engagement of those staff members, and we will begin coming back to them in the near future. We will continue to come back to them in the near future and throughout the rest of the year to solicit multiple layers of feedback and to provide updates. Lastly, staff have been busy sending flyers and surveys home with families, attending parent coffee chats, back-to-school nights, and hosting town hall meetings in order to engage and solicit feedback from students and families in the initial site layouts and designs. We have witnessed great success in thinking outside the box in terms of community engagement. For example, we planned a large community engagement effort at all three sites to take place as part of their recent back-to-school nights, as I stated. We brought out taco trucks and were able to meet with families where they were. And because of that, I'd love to share that we served more than 1,000 tacos and talked with more than 350 individuals at each site. We're also gathering student input through these events, but we're also walking around campuses during lunch recess, hear their hopes and dreams for new campus, as well as answer any questions they might have. And it should come as no surprise that many of the comments and questions we're receiving from those students are that of the adults as well. We have been able to rethink what community engagement looks like at the Facilities Department, and we are experiencing noted success in the level of engagement we have received so far. However, we're continuing to grow our community engagement muscle, and as such, we are in the process of identifying and engaging with parents and nonprofit organizations that are able to assist us with engagement through traditional grassroots efforts. We believe door-to-door engagement and related efforts will help us ensure that we are finding a strong balance between community needs and desires and the district and design constraints. Staff will be focused on engaging the various stakeholders throughout the entire design process into the construction phase. It is our intent to carry on the award-winning efforts of our Facilities Master Plan in terms of ensuring authentic engagement and how it takes place throughout the whole entire process. And with that, our next steps will be to come back to the board in November to share very specific details about the site layout, design, and construction efforts of these three projects. Thank you, and with that, any questions?
Great, thank you. Do we have public comment?
We do. Terrence Gladney.
I was in charge of the clock. Okay, all right. Good evening again. I'm as a member of the FNP Core Planning Facility, Core Planning Committee, I do again want to uplift Nathaniel, Chris, Ron Hickey, Dr. Stan Backstrout, who was with the consulting group, Dr. Lee Sada, all of the staff, but also all the community members that were there. I think I came sort of like midstream, and myself and Dr. Jesus Hernandez really pushed for a re-centered focus on equity, and it took a huge amount of humility from staff to say that they didn't know what they knew, or, you know, they didn't know what they don't know. And really just stop and pivot and bring in a consultant who were experts. I really think that that should be the map and the compass that our district follows. I don't see it at the board level, so I hope that you guys would follow the intent and the model that has been created in this space that truly is engaging, and hopefully we can, you know, come to new outcomes. When we look at new schools being built, I think when we look at the FNP and the new schools being built, that is a different mindset that has not existed. That's why our schools are so old, because we've been okay with being okay, if we even want to say that we've been okay. New people in the room, Nathaniel was new to facilities, but the first thing that he spoke when he had a conversation with me was about equity. He came to the community and said, "I don't know this, what do you know? How can we work together?" And this is the result. And the one thing I did see though in the presentation, starting with the district and talking about what the curriculum and the frameworks look like, I think that that is still a little bit inverted. We have to start with the community at the school site, we cannot push things down to the school site and then say, "Hey, what do you want in addition to what we've decided is best?" And lastly, in the intent of this matrix, the equity matrix, I would love for you guys to go through a board workshop, so I, myself as someone who helped sort of push for it, could see what it looks like at each step to come to the outcomes that still decide on these schools. But again, we also have some unfulfilled promises. We still have a school named Sutter, there's a big hubbub to align with all of this work, and it went stale. I've asked multiple times at board meetings, I was told they're going to restart last November, and it's still sort of like the elevated pedestal sitting school, and we have board members asking for expansion of a program that is outgrown in space, but it's outgrown in space because it continues to rob the riches of neighborhood middle schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Terrence. Do we have any board comment?
We do not.
Member Garcia?
Yes, so I just, I just want to take a moment to celebrate, you know, just what we're about to embark on. So just to clarify, you said that these three sites are going to be brand-new sites? They're going to be complete tear downs and a total rebuild?
That is correct.
Wow, we're going to have modern-looking school sites? That's really exciting. You know, sometimes I drive by San Juan Unified and I do pay attention as to the type of buildings that they have and do reflect that ours are very old-looking. So it's really exciting to know that these three schools will be brand-new. I do also want to ask, when you're rebuilding from scratch, if you're going to rebuild in a way that's going to allow for growth, not in terms of just enrollment, but also for growth in accommodating programs? So we know that after-school programming is going to be something that's going to grow at all school sites. I know that the space is often an issue, so I'm just wondering how you're factoring all of those exciting opportunities into what a brand-new school site might look like?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll give you a little bit of a teaser, but I must insist that we are coming back in November just to focus on this. But we have taken our feedback that we received from the community, from the site, and from district staff, and they are sharing a lot of the same things that you're asking for and requesting. And I know that we were able to steal Mr. Ralston from San Juan, where they also incorporated a lot of this into their facilities there. And so, I think you'll be pleasantly surprised and happy to see what Mr. Ralston has to present in November.
Great, well, I'm looking forward to it and I'm very excited for our students at these schools and just our community as a whole and our district, so thank you.
Thank you. Member Villa?
So I've already told you both, I'm very excited about these projects. This is long overdue, obviously. Nicholas, I attended the community event this week, and I'm so excited to see that this is community-led. This is really starting at a grassroots level of talking to the students, the parents, teachers, I mean, this is, you guys are doing the work that, again, the folks, the community is asking of us to do. Very mindful conversations, very thoughtful, and very detail-oriented, but just seeing what, you know, what's going to happen at just Nicholas alone, but the other schools is incredibly exciting. This is something that our district should be very proud of, and obviously to see this roll out, hopefully to other schools in the future, will change SAC City. It'll change the neighborhoods, it'll change the community, and our students are going to see, just the conversations that we heard of these students and hearing about, you know, what they're going to be able to access on their school campus now that they didn't have before, or the safety measures that you're really putting in place, again, that are thoughtful. First thing that I noticed, you and Nicholas, is just the pickup and the drop-off. That is very challenging, the way that you guys are addressing that, and again, being very thoughtful, listening to community members, listening to the parents of what's important to them. I'm very thankful for this work, I'm very excited for the next two years, and I can't wait to come back to Nicholas on day one and celebrate with everyone, so thank you.
Thank you. Member Rose?
Don't go anywhere.
Don't leave. So, I'd like to say, you guys have done an amazing job from the tours that you gave teachers and administrators, actually going visiting other schools and taking the knockers and having that conversation, starting off there and getting their input, but then really the work that you've done, like popping up at back-to-school nights, meeting parents where they're at, talking to them in lines as they're waiting for their tacos, and literally saying, "Hey, we're doing this and how would you like to be involved?" Even before that, at the community fairs, you guys being out there, and then the extra effort of saying, "Now, let's see how we can go door-to-door to really get community input." I very much appreciate that, especially the way that I have such a love for the community where you guys are actually doing that community work as well, from a facility side, is amazing. So I really appreciate that. And then also, I appreciate your mannerisms at the meetings. I've come to all of these meetings, and the way that you guys are connecting, giving space for parents, and letting them be able to be in the space as it's theirs, and not overly trying to control the space. It was very good to see, especially, think about Edward Kimball and Cesar Chavez, I've been in that community since my early twenties, starting working in after-school programs as when I was a college student, and literally after-school program at Edward Kimball is where I met my kids' mothers, where my kids go to now, like, the community aspect and you guys respecting that in the space is a beautiful thing, so thank you guys so much. So thank you guys so much.
Perfect. Thank you so much, and I got to say, I absolutely love the community aspect with the thought of equity throughout the district. I just really appreciate the work that you've all put in it, and I'm looking forward to your presentation in November, since you gave us the little teaser. We're looking forward to the rest. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Item 10.0, public hearings. Public hearing, 10.1, public hearing on resolution number 3290, resolution to convey utility easement entitlements to the Sacramento Municipal Utilities District for Hiram Johnson. Hi, Nathaniel. You thought you were getting away, didn't you?
No, I was prepared. Thank you.
All right.
All right, President Pritchett, Superintendent Aguilar, members of the board, I'm Nathaniel Browning again. And in accordance with education code, we are required to allow the public the opportunity to comment on any of the district, when the district intends to grant an easement or dedicate real property to another public entity. In this case, we're talking about a utilities easement for Sacramento Municipal Utilities District, or SMUD, at Hiram Johnson High School located at 6879 14th Avenue in Sacramento, which is where we are currently making athletic field improvements. This easement is in order to provide adequate power to that facility. This time, we would like to hold that public hearing and receive any public comments. This is not a board action item. The resolution will be voted on tonight during the consent agenda item.
Perfect. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
All right. Do we have any board comment? All right. This is the first reading. We're looking forward to having it back. Thank you. Item 11.0, communications. 11.1, employee organizational reports, SCTA. Can you please put 15 minutes on the clock? 15 minutes.
Good evening. David Fisher, president of the Second City Teachers Association. So let's start tonight with some good news. The district's budget is even stronger than it has been the last few years, to the extent that even school board members running for reelection are acknowledging the district's budget is solid with projected surpluses for years. Good thing, right? Notably, these projected surpluses include the district accepting the $47 million fine for refusing to accept a proposal to add the days that were lost because the district decided to close the schools during the strike. Despite a $223 million increase in revenue to the district in the last four years, once again, unfortunately, we start the school year with a severe shortage of certificated and classified staff. Of course, everyone knows the shortage everywhere, right? However, we also know that it's much worse here in Sac City. In El Grove, which is one and a half times larger than Sac City, there are 20 certificated vacancies. In San Juan, which is about the same size as Sac City, 35 certificated vacancies. Sac City, over 160 certificated vacancies. How many classrooms have already gone without a substitute? We are already receiving reports of schools experiencing substitute shortages and classes having to be combined into cafeterias and auditoriums. Meanwhile, the district has refused to extend the increase in substitute pay that would greatly help. We're understaffed at almost every site. However, there's one site that was way overstaffed. Inexplicably, the district added maybe a dozen positions over the summer at Cap City Independent Studies, and almost simultaneously began surplusing those teachers out, 27 teachers out. One teacher, it was her first day, the day before she was surplused out. Where's the accountability? How does that happen? Let's turn for a minute to the expansion of TK. Should be another opportunity for good news, right? SCTA Vice President Nikki Milewski emailed all of you and the superintendent about it, and when no one responded, she emailed again, still no response. So what's going on with TK? On May 19, 2022, over a dozen district staff stood here at this podium and painted an amazing but completely inaccurate picture of the district's plan to expand TK based on AB 130 that was signed into law back in July of 2021. Sac City is receiving an additional $30 million for this expansion, and has been the signature issue for our assembly member Kevin McCarty. So we would have thought this would be one area the district could have worked with us, with their teachers, to implement a positive program. They did not. It's hard to accurately describe what complete chaos the expansion has been. We first requested to meet with the district on this issue in the fall of 2021, nearly one year ago. However, the district made its first proposal to us on August 25, 2022, one week before classes began. The district's proposal was riddled with errors. The proposed instructional minutes and working hours changed from one meeting to the next. We had to point out that the district's proposal would have left the TK collaborative classes well short of the yearly required instructional minutes for kindergarten. And the proposal had a schedule for the TK teacher that extended the day by two hours and allowed no breaks. The district's team was not prepared to resolve issues before classes started, and since classes began, have refused to meet. More recently, but related, we've been notified that parents who have come to our district seeking preschool services have been placed on a waiting list. As part of its TK expansion, the district closed preschool classrooms to make room for TK collaborative. The district reassured us that the expansion of TK would not be at the expense of students assessing preschool programs. That has turned out not to be true, and none of you appear to be ready to ask the hard question, why is this such a mess? Parents have been promised programs for their young children only to be told at the 11th hour that they weren't available. Why? Because district administration is dysfunctional, and there doesn't appear to be any accountability. Community schools, another opportunity for good news. However, despite repeated requests for the district to engage with us on this issue, for which Sac City has received $9.5 million from the state for the community schools, the superintendent with your support has refused to even meet. He has refused to discuss it. This is a direct violation of the letter and the spirit of the law that brought these resources to the district. As a result, we'll be filing another unfair practice charge over district's unlawful refusal to even discuss the matters with educators. Also, as an email we wrote yesterday, administrators are, for some unknown reason, continuing to deny special education students co-teaching services that are required by their IEPs, a fact that we pointed out to the district weeks ago. No answers, no follow-up, no accountability. And all this is happening on your watch. Our students deserve better, parents deserve better, educators deserve better, of course, our community deserves better. So, and where I started, there's all this potential good news. You're no longer even projecting your imaginary deficits. We just need a school board that's ready to act like there's good news. Thank you.
SCIU? Teamsters? UPE? All right. 11.2, district advisory committees. Community Advisory Committee? Hi, welcome.
Hi, friends. Long time no see. Good evening, trustees and superintendent. I am Sarah Williams Kingsley, and this year, I am serving as a member-at-large on the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education. I've been before you many times about this topic, so we'll just skip right to the business. We had our first general membership meeting of the academic year in September. We have an all-new executive committee this year, so the entire executive committee from the prior two years or so is no longer serving. So we have all new, we've got several new parents, several staff members are serving, which is a new thing for our committee, and we're very excited about it. So we had a good turnout at our first meeting of parents and educators who are concerned and seeking guidance and information to support their students with disabilities. Among the needs expressed were education about the IEP process, especially as parents and students return to school in person, and that process has been kind of off-kilter for a number of school years, knowing their rights, being a caregiver for students with disabilities, and also concerns about the quality of instruction and services, as well as transportation issues. In response to the needs expressed at the general membership meeting, the executive committee met this Sunday, and we have identified a theme in a series of workshops and presentations for the entire year to support students with disabilities and their families. Our first workshop in October will focus on the transportation crisis and safety issues that families have experienced this academic year. We encourage all community members who want to contribute to and engage in this conversation to join us at our meeting on Tuesday, October 18, at 6:00 p.m. The meetings are still being held by Zoom due to health issues for many of our members and their families, so you can still participate in that from home. Looking ahead, the collection of issues expressed by the community at the general membership meeting led us to adopt a theme of inclusion for this academic year. All of our programming, discussions, and cooperation with the district and the SELPA will be laser-focused on identifying the instructional services and accommodations that students need to be placed in the least restrictive environment to access their public education. We will also be emphasizing the legal and civil rights of students and their caregivers, and collating and providing good information about the services and resources available for students with disabilities. Specifically, like our first project is giving our families a very cohesive and easy-to-understand list of all of the school sites that offer special-day classes and what those special-day classes are. At every turn, we will highlight the intersectionality that disproportionately impacts students of color, English language learners, and unhoused and foster youth. We invite all parents, all parents and families, and all solution-oriented community members to join us this year. Lastly, we note that this month is Dyslexia Awareness Month. In many years since 2015, this board has adopted a resolution committing to do better for students with dyslexia and the other, I have one paragraph, and the other language-based learning disabilities in our district. One of the workshops this year will focus on the quality instruction for students with dyslexia and reading struggles, and will highlight some of the positive steps being taken by the district and the remaining challenges left in our district to improve instruction and the belief that these students can succeed. We look forward to collaborating with and also respectfully holding accountable the SELPA staff and district educators to improve the general education placements and success of our students with disabilities. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. District English Learner Advisory Committee? Local Control Accountability Plan Parent Advisory Committee? Parents?
Good evening again. Just to be clear, I'm not here in an official capacity, but we have not had an LCAP PAC meeting since the departure of Stephen Fong. So we are left in limbo for something that is statutorily essential to the operation of our district and our budget. There's an LCAP reference in the consolidated item that's in consent. We've asked to meet, and we've basically been told that we probably will just have to wait until a person is put in place. I have not heard any updates on it, so I don't know that there's a sense of urgency, but if so, then it's not tangible. It's not noticeable. It's not visible. But again, if we're talking about dollars, we're talking about children, children that are generating, you know, the essential funds for our district. I think that, you know, personally, I just think that it's kind of out of line to have an LCAP PAC item, and we are not functional right now. So that's very concerning, and I hope this is equally concerning to you guys.
Absolutely. We'll look into that. Thank you. Student Advisory Council?
So we released our first newspaper this month. We want to ask if K Ambassador and the College Wafer have been integrated into the budget, and we also want to find out who replaced the LCAP person. So...
We'll get those answers to you, Superintendent. Okay, we'll get those answers to you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. African-American Advisory Committee or Board? Welcome back.
The vice chair on the Black African-American Advisory Board, last night, the superintendent and other staff came and presented to us with the hopes of providing us an update on the state of blacks in SEUSD, of the actions that were taken as a committee. We have elected to move our meeting schedule for our general body to a quarterly schedule, and we'll continue our committee work monthly to really just drill down on the core pieces of the work. And we'll also have our executive committee meetings monthly as well. So our next meeting tentatively is scheduled for January 4, and we hope to continue doing the work on behalf of the black and African-American students in our district. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Item 11.3, Superintendent's Report?
Thank you very much, President Pritchett. I just want to start by thanking everyone who is here at our board meeting and listening as well. We're just over a month into the school year, and there are many, many exciting things happening throughout our district. You heard earlier today, this evening in the presentation around our facilities master plan update, that this past week, our team hosted community meetings at Oak Ridge, Nicholas, and Edward Kimball and Cesar Chavez. I know board members were in attendance, and I just want to say thank you to all of you for being there. And to Member Garcia's point, how exciting it is for our entire community that we plan to rebuild these campuses from the ground up by 2025. Students, families, and staff had the opportunity to review construction plans, materials, outdoor spaces, and school layout and more. And as you heard from Mr. Browning, we will be coming back with a more extensive update for the board and for our community in November. These large-scale projects were made possible thanks to the voter-approved Measure H bond that feels like it happened so long ago, but it was just a couple of years ago. And the sites, as you heard, were selected using our award-winning Equity-Based Facility Master Plan Equity Index that's available for anyone to review on our website at www.seusdplan.org, one word. I also want to mention that there are other facility improvements happening all across the district, and we continue to ask our community to bear with us as they patiently wait for some of that construction to be completed, a lot of shade structures, a lot of playground upgrades, and a lot of stadia, or at least in Hiram Johnson's case, stadium renovation. I happen to drive on 65th almost every morning, and it's exciting to see the footings and this week, the placement of the bathroom facility, I think the ticketing facility that were brought in with huge cranes. Tomorrow morning at 8:30, OW Early Wine Elementary School will hold a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the reopening of its campus library. Member Pritchett, in your area, the library will welcome students with a fresh makeover and the addition of new and inclusive books that reflect the culture diversity on campus. We certainly hope that the reopening of this library will help our students at Early Wine recover some of the learning loss that they may have experienced as a result of the COVID pandemic. And I want to just especially congratulate Principal Eric Chapman and the library services team for their efforts over the past few years to make this project happen, and also for their effort and care to stock the new library shelves with books that will keep students coming back. Since our last board meeting, board members, and I was able to attend very briefly, because as Member Pritchett mentioned earlier, some of us attended the celebration of life for Dr. Easter and her family recently on the same day. Our college and career team hosted a very successful college and career fair at Hiram Johnson High School. I was able to see Member Rhodes there as well. More than 400 people attended to learn more about high school specialty programs, career and technical education pathways, student aid, and college and university options. So it was exciting to see many, many of our students from each of our career technical education pathway programs promoting their programs and explaining to students and families why they might consider or should consider some of those CTE pathway programs as they think about entering high school, especially as we enter into the application period for some of these programs. The fair also included seminars by the California Student Aid Commission to help families learn more about deadlines and the application process. And we will certainly, student member McGurk, come back to you on how we plan to implement the piece of ensuring that students have the ability to apply to colleges and universities as well. And speaking of our high school specialty programs and other programs, the application period is fast approaching. It begins November 1 and runs through November 30. Board members, we are preparing for you and for your use on social media, the ability for you to help us communicate and promote these very important deadlines as well. As you know, year in and year out, some of our families aren't aware and wish that they had been aware, so we're going to ask you as our Board of Education to also help us promote these important deadlines. We're also excited about a new partnership with SchoolMint, which will be rolling out their enrollment information resource called School Finder. It's a new website, if you will. Um, it's a new website, if you will, that's going to be launched where families will be able to sort through the schools in our district and learn about our different locations and program offerings. Uh, I hear, uh, every single year from our principals that they would love to be able to promote their own programs. Uh, and so we think that, uh, this partnership is going to be very fruitful in that parents will be able to look up the features and unique characteristics of each of our schools. Um, and we're just excited to see that happening, uh, here in the next couple of weeks. Also want to just celebrate that while I was not able to attend, um, I want to just, uh, acknowledge our incredible staff, uh, who made an impact in our community uh, and helping our good reputation grow, uh, as well. To congratulate our very own Chef Yolanda of Central Kitchen for winning the veggie of the year as Team Radish. Chef Yolanda created a pickled radish bao bun dish and competed against top local chefs to win this distinction. Uh, we just think that this is, uh, one example of how Sac City Unified is innovating in the field of school nutrition. The Veggie of the Year competition is Food Literacy Center's fun and way, fun way of sharing Food Literacy Month with Sacramento Elementary Schools, empowering children to eat their vegetables and improve their health while also raising money and awareness around food literacy. Uh, on the similar subject of health, of course, I want to continue to encourage our community to attend one of our upcoming vaccination clinics. Uh, new by, um, the new boosters are available for those who want protection against the potential new variants and waves of COVID that everyone is anticipating this winter. Uh, I was able to stop by and get my booster last week and yesterday also accompanied, uh, a community member. And, um, we would like to see more community members attend our, uh, Tuesday clinics, which are scheduled at the Enrollment Center on October 11th, the 18th, the 25th from 4 to 6. And another Wednesday, October 19th from 3 to 7 at Elder Creek Elementary. And finally, board members, I apologize for going over time, President Pritchett. I know that you will join me in saying how proud we are of the Sac City Unified Health Services Team led by Victoria Flores, uh, and her entire team. They've done a remarkable job helping us navigate, uh, the COVID pandemic and keeping our schools safely open. And that's why I am just proudly, uh, very excited to announce that Sac City Unified will receive the Golden Bao Award for intervention in the time of crises. This award will be formally presented to us in December by the California School Board Association to honor our return to health plan. As you know, this plan was a model for other districts to follow and allowed us to keep our schools open safely and minimize the impact of COVID on learning. I want to just congratulate, um, uh, congratulations to our return to health team on this prestigious award and well-deserved recognition for all of their hard work. And of course, thank you, um, each and every one of you as board members for your unwavering support throughout this process over the past two years. Um, and I, I know that our team, um, expressed their interest in, in us thanking you publicly as well. So I want to thank them and thank you as well, board members.
Perfect. Thank you, Superintendent. Item 11.4, President's Report? I don't have a lot. I just wanted to, to, I, I mentioned about, uh, Dr. Easter's celebration of life earlier and I just want to, um, give a huge shout out to the Golden Empire community. And going to the, uh, celebration of life really showed me the, the impact that she had in that area. Um, and, uh, and the community support that came out for her family was just amazing. Um, and also seeing that her own students raising awareness, uh, and we'll get to meet this, um, one of the young men that, that did that at an upcoming board meeting. So I'm really looking forward to that. And so that's all I have for that. Um, I do have just a clarifying question, Dr. McCarn? Since I have some time, I, I just have a clarifying question. Can you tell me how many open positions we have currently? How many, how many vacancies? Yes. 53 total though. Okay. Thank you so much for that clarification. All right. With that, we'll move on to, um, 11.5, student members' report.
I have nothing to report.
You don't have to report that. Item 11.6, information sharing by board members. Member Garcia?
Um, yes, so I just have, um, a couple of, um, requests. Um, after-school programming, I think, um, at some of our sites, it's, it's still, you know, a little bumpy. I know that, um, many of our providers are trying to hire as fast as they can. There is a process, you know, with background checks, et cetera. But, um, just, you know, thinking ahead, um, how we can maybe, um, more systemically uh, work more closely with our providers, um, so that we can make sure that we know on both ends, from the district side and the provider side, how many families are asking, um, for their children to have a spot in after-school programs. So these, um, you know, they're fully staffed on day one and, um, and not, you know, getting surprises that they don't have a spot. Like, I think in, in one case, uh, this, the days before school started. So it's just, I'm trying to make sure that we anticipate, um, needs and that we do whatever we can to, um, make sure that that process is smooth. And then, um, and then also, uh, for Cal Kids, this is a, a huge state investment. About like $4 billion, something, um, wild like that. Um, these are, um, uh, savings accounts for kids in, um, I think it's first grade to 12th grade. And it varies depending on, um, the type of student. But these are college savings accounts for either college or career. So I'm just wondering if, um, if we can figure out how to, um, work with, um, the state agency to make sure that we communicate with our families, that they can go ahead and claim these accounts. These accounts are already in place. Um, and just wanting to make sure that our families open those accounts so that they can, you know, um, access those dollars. You know, at a later time when their child is moving on to college or, um, or career. So, um, so again, it's a state investment, so at this point, the role of the, um, of the district would be to communicate this information to our families and, um, help them access those funds. So, um, those are the two, um, comments and requests that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Garcia. All right. Not seeing any others. We'll move on to item 12.0, consent agenda. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
All right. Can I get a motion? In a second.
Taylor's.
We have, have a comment? Uh, Taylor? Sorry. Come on up, Taylor.
Sorry, I didn't have much to say anyway, but, um, I was, uh, motivated to speak on the approval to send a debate team to Nevada. As someone who was in speech and debate myself in high school, I just think that's amazing. We should have this more often and we should celebrate these teams. I know it's really exciting, football teams, other sports. Um, but for me, speech and debate really made my high school experience and we should celebrate these academic scholars. Um, the other item I wanted to comment on was the, um, approval of the administering medication and monitoring health conditions, which we heard a couple of weeks ago. Um, it's just so amazing how timely this is and how appropriate this is. Um, shortly after you had the public hearing for this, CDPH issued guidance to schools about the danger of rainbow fentanyl, which can be treated with Narcon. Um, it's just amazing that we're doing this. I'm really excited. Um, I hope we can roll this out effectively and really educate our staff. This is, these drugs, these very powerful drugs are finding their way into our community. Um, and we need to be at the forefront and I'm glad to see this leadership. So thank you and, uh, great meetings tonight.
Thank you. All right. I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. All right. With that, uh, future board meetings, um, October 13th and November 3rd. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
I'm gonna get a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. All right. Thank you. Media adjourned.